Okay, we're ready. Welcome. Good to see so many shiny faces and everything. I hope you had a great day. You know, it's really hard to have a bad day in Canyon City, isn't it? So the first 15 minutes of every meeting, we have an open mic. All we'd ask you to do is come up and address the city council. We'd just like to know who you are. If you have put your name into a written request to talk to council, we'll take care of that later. This is just anyone that would want to talk to city council at this time. You're welcome to come to the mic right now and talk to us. Okay, it doesn't seem like anybody rushing to the mic. So...
We can't see them.
We can't see them. All right, well, let's just go ahead and get going then. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The September 18th meeting, the city council. September 18th, wow. Could we all rise and have the invocation by Greg Swerengen of the Royal Gorge Vineyard?
Lord, we just want to lift up the city to you tonight, and we're so thankful for it. It's such a beautiful place to live, and so many people behind the scenes here at the city are putting extra effort in just to make this a great place to live. So we remember them tonight, all their efforts, and as a council as well, we ask for just continued wisdom and guidance in the leadership of this city, and we continue just to make this a great place to live. And so we just ask for your protection over us, guide us, and direct us. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is as firm as the fire in the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith, here. Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes, excused, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And now, any citizens that have put their name in written to talk to council, would you call them out?
We have two written requests. The first one being from Steve Andrews. He wants to talk to city council in regards to the Black Hills franchise.
Evening, my name is Steve Andrews. I'm a retired energy consultant living in Florence. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My remarks here are delivered on behalf of Pueblo's Energy Future, a grassroots network of concerned citizens, elected officials like Pueblo County Commissioner Terry Hart, business owners, service organizations, the faith community, and others. My focus in the group is on the energy costs within the business sector. Black Hills energy rates for electricity are among the highest investor-owned utilities in the western states outside of California. A table showing comparison rates is attached to one-page handout that also contains a copy of my remarks, and I'll be giving that to Kathy for the record momentarily.
Thank you.
Those high rates create a heavy economic burden on businesses and ratepayers within the Black Hills service territory, which stretches from Cripple Creek to Rocky Ford. Blame those high rates on Black Hills' corporate philosophy that maximizes profits at the expense of their customers, and secondly, on poor regulatory supervision, at least until recently, by the Colorado Public Utilities Commission. Whatever the cause, Pueblo's ratepayers likely pay a majority fraction of Black Hills' roughly $250 million a year in annual revenues in Colorado. As you may have heard, next Monday, Pueblo City Council will likely be stating their intent to take an early off-ramp, which is allowed by state statute, from their 20-year agreement with Black Hills. Colorado statute allows for early exits from the agreement in the years 10 and 15 of the agreement, which in Pueblo's cases are years 2020 and 2025. If Pueblo City Council votes for the 2020 off-ramp, they will have limited time to study their options for switching to a different provision of electricity for customers and then implementing one. The options they will study likely will be municipalization, which is not my first choice, creation of an enterprise utility similar to Pueblo Water, opportunities for farming out the running of the system to a set of third parties, or encouraging third parties to actually purchase the entire service territory. What that might mean for Canyon City and other municipalities? First, rates could go up, possibly substantially, if Pueblo's the only city to leave the service territory. That's because Pueblo is the plum in the 95,000-meter area, the largest and highest-density segment. Second, faced with the loss of Pueblo, Black Hills could decide to sell the entire distribution system, with or without the generation plants, to a third party. Since there will be impacts upstream and downstream of Pueblo, if Pueblo exits Black Hills, we encourage all 20 other communities in the service territory to get involved in a kickoff dialogue. We especially encourage Canyon City to have a key member of your community involved in that dialogue, given that you are apparently about to sign within weeks a revised 20-year franchise agreement that will lock you in for a minimum of 10 years thereafter. We in fact hope you may reconsider signing that document now. The kickoff dialogue hopefully with all 21 communities will likely be co-chaired by Pueblo City Councilmember Alaria Tencio. To reach him for more information, please see his contact information on this sheet, as well as my contact information. Finally, for the record, Canyon City has more leverage regarding Black Hills than Breakaway Boulder has regarding Exel Energy, and Pueblo has massively more leverage than Boulder with Black Hills. Pueblo is demanding change due to the economic impact of Black Hills' extremely high rates. We expect that change is likely to happen. We hope you will join us. Thank you, and I will now leave these for Kathy, or should I approach?
Yes. Why don't you bring it up, please? Or down.
And if you have questions either now or later, I can be reached on my contact information, so can my lawyer, Susan Fuck.
I received some of your articles that you'd written, and I've read them through, and we're not, I don't think we're close to even signing anything with Black Hills at this time.
We'd have to go to an election.
So we're, we have to have an election anyway, and that would, will have to occur next year. So there'll be a lot of time to discuss it and go over it and see what the alternatives are.
Perhaps I was misinformed. I'd be glad to coordinate with anyone that you would like. I hope someone will reach out and give us a few of the facts so that we're up to date.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Really well, thank you. Next.
The second one we have is Eric Powells. He wants to talk to council about the noise on Tunnel Drive from gravel trucks and their jake breaking.
Okay, my name is Eric Powells, and I live at 120 Tunnel Drive, and as Kathy said, this would be kind of a noise complaint. And I'd like to go over the noise ordinance. I kind of condensed it, and it reads, "This is unlawful, it is unlawful for any person to make any loud unnecessary noise, which annoys or disturbs the peace emitting person within the limits of the city." And my problem is with the jake brakes of the gravel trucks coming down from Tezac Mine. And they run the jake brakes, and as far as I understand, a jake brake is a compression-release engine brake. It's outside of the normal brakes, and it's something they use just to slow the truck down, but it's not necessary to stop it. They do it to avoid wear on the brakes, and I think they do it to make noise, too. I think they enjoy it. It makes quite a bit of noise, and I think it's unnecessary. So I think the key wording in the ordinance would be the unnecessary noise, and I deem it to be unnecessary. So I would recommend that the city council look into this and make jake brakes illegal in this, within city limits. And other municipalities do this, so it's not unusual for them to outlaw jake brakes. And that noise also affects not only Tunnel Drive, but the whole valley, and it will affect the power plant area also, which I understand is considered in development. So all those things should be considered.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Yeah, we'll consider that, and we also have, I've been through towns that they don't allow going through town, and I have an office on Royal Gorge Boulevard, and it is very loud. And I, having grown up in a trucking family, would have to agree, they're good. They're used to slow your truck down, but not always necessary.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner.
We don't have a jake brake ordinance?
No, it's very vague.
I know that some of them are muffled jake brakes. If they're on a straight pipe, much louder. If there's a muffler before it, then the jake brake is not so loud.
That's right. A lot of them just have straight pipes. I think the gravel trucks, some trucks do. I don't just pick on them, but it's not necessary. Next.
That's all we have.
That's it. Well, thank you. Thank you all for contributing. So that's move number three, approval of the minutes for the September 5th, 2017 regular city council meeting and the September 6th general government committee meeting. Are there any corrections at this time? Mr. Meisner.
I mean, this is real minor, but on page two, the general government meeting, number two, and Adam's here, he could maybe help clarify. Have you got that, Adam? On item number two, the middle of the sentence where it talks about disengaged motor and, shouldn't that say or, if a disabled person?
He's talking about the exceptions.
Right, in the middle of that, lower part of that paragraph. Should say or, at least in terms of the interpretation I got from Adam in the meeting.
You said page two?
Well, it's item two of the general government meeting.
Item two.
It's in the middle of the paragraph where it starts with...
Item two, page one.
Well, they're not numbered.
Four, instead of an, I got it.
This is...
Or. Yeah, he wants or in there.
Yeah, we saw that.
Did we note it?
Yes. The answer was yes.
Pardon?
That would be yes. Or.
Thank you.
Put that in there.
I'm good.
Anyone else?
You're reaching, Jim.
Well, no, it's...
No, you're right. You're absolutely right.
It's not a reach if you read the...
None and or. Any other comments or any corrections on the minutes? If none, could I have a motion in a second from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Schumacher.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction Mr. Meisner stated. Oh, I guess I should back that up, to approve the minutes from the September 5th, 2017 regular city council meeting, and the corrected minutes from the September 6th general government committee meeting.
Second.
Second, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Any councilmember announcements or announcements at this time? Me?
Yeah.
Yes, on Wednesday, we had the four o'clock vision committee, am I correct? Here in our chambers, and that is publicized, I mean televised, not publicized, televised. And we're going to talk about the river corridor. Okay?
There's planning commission meeting here tomorrow night at seven o'clock here in this chamber.
And Saturday, the 23rd, at one o'clock?
Bring your bathing suit.
Is the grand splash at Centennial Park?
Uh-huh.
Introducing the new splash pad.
At one o'clock, right?
At one o'clock.
Is it already go?
Yep.
Looked finished to me.
Bring your beach towels.
Top coat to put on this week, and that's it.
It's going to be warm for that.
It's supposed to be about 70, so...
So, okay. That's at Centennial Park, it's a new splash pad.
Yes.
And hopefully you all attend and bring your friends and neighbors. Okay, well, move for an adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Tony, could you review the consent agenda, please?
Mayor and council, 5A would be Resolution 21 of 2017 that would approve and adopt revisions to the city's right-of-way construction standards. 5B is a Resolution 24-2017. It would disband the current public arts committee. 5C is a Resolution 25-17 supports a grant application from the great outdoors of Colorado for enhancements to the Arkansas River restoration, as well as Centennial Park. 5D is a Resolution 26-17. This would change the street numbers assigned to a mobile home space at Jewett Street. There are currently 13 separate street addresses. This would change it to one common address with 13 individual unit numbers, to make it more clear. 5E would declare all playground equipment that's going to be removed from Centennial Park for our new playground equipment in the next week as surplus, so it could be donated to the town of Florence. 5F would authorize the mayor's signature for water service agreement with David Grayson at 1107 Grand Avenue, which is just outside the city limits. 5G would be a Resolution 27-2017, which would be for line item transfer adjustments in excess of $5,000 in compliance with the city charter. 5H would appoint members to a committee task force to address these self-propelled vehicles such as segways, electric bikes, hoverboards within city parks, trails, and sidewalks. 5I would authorize professional service agreement with S&amp;S coding for the blasting and coding inspection for the 5,000-gallon storage facility in Dawson Ranch at a cost not to exceed $29,380.28. And finally, 5J would award the bid of 50-17 for the rehabilitation of the Dawson Ranch storage tank to M&amp;M Coating Company at a cost not to exceed $118,890.20. That's substantially below our proposed budget of $185,000, so we're happy to report that.
Tony, how often does that need to be done in the tanker?
I think that tank's been in place for an excessive 10 years. Bob's been here, so that's a typical 10-to-15-year window.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. And in the list of bills, could we, the administrator's report, please?
I need a vote.
Just to highlight, we should receive...
Can we vote on the agenda and consent agenda?
Oh, consent.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. That's why you're here.
List of bills.
Are there any additions or corrections to that?
I do have some things. I just wanted to point out that on, for C, on the resolution to support a grant application for the great, for GoCo grants for the park, that money that has already been spent on the park, that money can be used for future matches on grants.
Okay.
So that's, so that is a way to utilize the money that we've already invested.
Yeah.
I also had a question on F, on the water service agreement. Is that just to hook up to city water? Does that include an annexation of property as well?
Just water.
Just water. And I was wondering if we could have Harry give some more explanations on 27 on the budget line item transfers? So I think, Harry, for some, it might be a little bit confusing.
Sure, what this resolution is, is established under the charter that, you know, these budget line items are necessary to transfer within the line items within the departments. Under, in 89, city council established the procedure, and under $5,000 items within the line items within the department is authorized by the city administrator. But anything over $5,000 has to be authorized by city council. And what you have seen in the list is the detail what unanticipated expense within the department increase or decrease in one line items we are adjusting, but the bottom line will not any change of the fund balance. So it's just minor adjustments over the years what happened, you know, in each department's line items.
I think to put it in context, for example, our two largest funds are the general fund and the water fund. Then the general fund, 96.5% of the time expenditures are made within the adopted budget, so only roughly 3.5% exceeded the 5,000 limit, so we have to come back and reconcile that with the council. In the water fund, 98.6% of the expenditures were within the line item limits, so we only have to bring back 1.4% of their expenditures for reconciliation. So I think it's a pretty good track record.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Could I then have a motion in a second for the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I moved that we approve the agenda and consent agenda as read.
Second.
Detective Mr. Weed. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Now, we have the administrator's report, if any.
We should receive the results of the citizen survey by the end of this week, so once we get them, we'll provide them to the council and to the media. It looks like our response rate is very close to last year, somewhere hovering between 38 and 39 percent. And to address any concerns about the number of people responding, this is a scientifically-based random survey, unlike other surveys that may be in the public that are, I would call, haphazard, because you have no control over who's filling them out, how often they're filling them out. So they're non-scientific. This is very scientific, and if done properly, you can take a small sample size, in our case, a little over 550 homes, that does represent the voice of 16,000 people. But it has to be done professionally and scientifically, which this is done. Tourism council has adopted a marketing plan that will come to the council on October the 2nd. I think that it will be very bold and represent not only the monies that the city is willing to match if the lodging tax is successful on November 7th, but also the county wants to chip in their $100,000 they'll raise, and they intend to dismantle their board, so we have one voice as it relates to tourism and marketing, not just Canyon City, but more importantly, for the Royal Gorge region. So I think that's a positive thing. And then finally, you know, Adam has some good news. The Fields Street sidewalk from central to south on both sides, we've gotten approval for that, so hopefully that will get constructed before the snow flies, and kids will have sidewalks to walk on as they go to school.
Those are going to be concrete or paved sidewalks?
Concrete.
Okay.
Yeah.
On both sides?
Yes.
That would be a massive improvement.
Yes. So happy to report that.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven is an ordinance number 20, series 2017. This is a second reading. It's an ordinance amending title 17.3 for signs. Would you read my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 20, series of 2017, and ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter 17.30, and amending certain provisions of the City of Canyon City Municipal Code concerning the regulation of signs.
Could I have a motion in a second? Mr. Weed?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, make the motion to approve ordinance number 20, series of 2017 on second reading.
Second.
Second, Ms. Schumacher. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Gill?
It's my understanding that this is done just to make sure we're okay with the ADA. Is that correct?
No, confirmed with the U.S. Supreme Court's decision.
Supreme Court, okay. So the changes that are being made in this ordinance, and I understand they're going to do a little more tweaking on it at a later date, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We'll have that process in general government, and then it'll go to planning and commission before coming back to the council.
So basically, the changes made in here are just so Canyon City is in compliance with the guys upstairs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Okay, number eight is ordinance number 29, series of 2017. This is a second reading as well. It's a zone change for 615 Pike Avenue. Would you read my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 29, series of 2017, and ordinance rezoning certain real property within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, at 615 Pike Avenue.
Okay, I believe I have a citizen that would like to speak. Gail Saxby at Mystic, is she here? Ma'am, would you expect to approach the microphone? Gail Saxby at 521 Mystic? Hi, Gail.
Hi. I've never done this before.
I haven't either.
I just wanted to say that I support having buildings, living, people living in buildings in that area. I bought my house 10 years ago. I'm only a block away. I can see Saint's Colastica from my house. And I, my father always told me not to buy a house near any houses that are abandoned. And I am very concerned that if you drive, which probably a lot of people don't, but I drive the back way sometimes, and if you've ever seen, like, Third and make 'em, Second and make 'em, I don't know, all around there, there's buildings that have been, have burned and are just boarded up. And then there's buildings that are just empty, people have given up trying to sell them. And I would hate to see that happen in our area, because I think we, you know, there's a lot of nice older homes restored there, and I think it adds maybe to the downtown. So I just wanted to say I'm one person that thinks that it can be a really good thing, and there should be affordable housing. My sister and I have talked about if we win the lottery, we're going to do that. We are going to build homes for people that could afford them.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a comment? I appreciate your comments and coming, using your courage to come address council today. And I just want to reassure you, as far as your concern with a lot of those houses that are abandoned in the neighborhood and burnt out, that we are aware of those houses, and we are tracking them. We've been working in a process, we're currently working towards a grant, and also have funding available to tear down some of those abandoned homes, and also a chance to rehabilitate them. And luckily, with the turn of the economy, we had a list of about 40 homes that were abandoned and in serious disrepair, and many of those have been purchased now and are getting fixed. And so we are paying very close attention to those homes, and hopefully in the future we'll be able to turn those around to be an asset to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments, any citizens? Then call for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 29, series of 2017 on second reading.
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that we clarify on this property on Pike's Peak, or on Pike Avenue, that this is not hood housing, and this is not Section 8 housing, and that we appreciate that, the owner, Michael Butler, appreciate that he has sat down with the property owners, and he has made accommodations to help meet some of their concerns. And that includes reducing the number of units to 82, maintaining a R2 development instead of a R3 development, going down to duplexes instead of fourplexes, and that it's going to be on our radar, I guess, to pay close attention to the parking and the aesthetics as we are moving forward. And that we have looked into studies showing that property values, and actually with projects similar to this, the neighborhood and the surrounding areas, actually the property values often raise instead of go down. So if it improves the neighborhood, it doesn't ruin the neighborhood. And I would also, if, Michael, if you don't mind, I'd like to hear an update since you've purchased the property, on what the timeline has been moving forward, if that's appropriate.
So we just finished the final closing last.
So we just finished the final closing last week, actually. So one of the biggest complaints was the grass and weeds and things. And so the, the grass has been cut. We are actually going to start tree servicing here next week. So all those trees, it's over two hundred trees, which that in itself is going to probably take four, five weeks. So after that, we'll get to work on the demolition of some of the interiors of some of the units. And then we'll start to try to, you know, go in and repair things. But, you know, I, until we get the utilities marked, you know, it's just, it's an overwhelming project if I don't focus on one area at a time. So right now, just to get the, get started, we have to locate the utilities. So you can't locate the utilities until you cut the grass. So once the grass is cut, we'll call in the utilities located. In fact, the plumbing, the plumbing was there so long that I don't think we have any schematics for the plumbing. So just to give you an example on the plumbing, we're going to have a plumber actually physically go in the buildings and run piping with a camera to kind of snake out the lines and know where the lines exist. There's a lot of that plumbing on some of the older buildings like this historic home. It was there before you guys even kept records in the city offices. So it, it's, there's a lot of work going on. You just don't physically see it right now because we have to do certain things before we start actual construction.
Well, I'm sure having the weeds cut and the trees come down is a huge progress already for the neighborhood. So that's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it took a while, like, two days.
Two days.
Just cut it. So, but yeah, we are moving forward. It's my number one focus right now. But, you know, it, it's, it's, it's been vacant ten years. So, you know, there's always, if any of you have ever owned real estate before, have done any, if you look at the home shopping channels or the channels on TV, the do-it-yourself channel, you always run into unknowns. That's just something that we're going to have to deal with as we go forward. I mean, who knows when I pull open a wall that I won't have to upgrade some electrical system or it's contaminated, you know, there's just so many unknowns that I'm dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion in a second, a discussion on the motion. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Number nine is ordinance number thirty-one, series two thousand, series two thousand seventeen. This is again a second reading. It's an ordinance rescinding ordinance nine, two thousand seventeen. Would you read my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirty-one, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance rescinding ordinance number nine, series of two thousand seventeen, concerning the termination of the city's current employee benefit plan.
Could I have a motion in a second from council? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number thirty-one, series of two thousand seventeen, upon second reading.
Second.
Miss Schumacher, second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
And number ten, it's ordinance number thirty-two, series of two thousand seventeen. It's a zone change for lot four, Fremont County Family Center PUD. This is a second reading. Would you read my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirty-two, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance rezoning certain real property within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, from R-one PUD Low Density Residential and a PUD Overlay to C Commercial and OPR Open Space Parks and Recreation. Lots A and B, Ninth Street West subdivision exemption.
Could I have a motion in a second? Miss Schumacher?
I make motion that we approve ordinance number thirty-two, series of two thousand seventeen, upon second reading.
Mr. Gill, second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Meisner?
Fundamentally, I'm not opposed to the zoning change in itself. My concern comes with the intent of the city and what the city's intent is with the land that would potentially be donated to the city. If you look at the public record, there's numerous references to the fact that the city intends by secondary use to use that area as recreational fields. If you look at charter in my interpretation, in order for this city to acquire land for recreational purposes, we have to have a vote. I don't see that happening here. I'm not sure how we resolve that, and I realize this is only a zoning change. But I have a real concern with what's already been documented in terms of what the city's intentions are. And maybe I would ask council to expand on that.
Sure, Councilmember Meisner. So as Cory and I have kind of discussed, your charter requires, as Councilmember Meisner related, that if you take property for park purposes, you have to have an election. It has to be approved by the voters. So it's ultimately up to council what direction they want to take. The donation agreement is not before you and won't be before you for another month or so. So you have some time to maybe consider how you want to handle that. But our opinion is, is if you're going to put improvements on that property that are park-related, so like permanent goalposts or anything like that, or spend park funds, you could trigger that section of your code if you haven't had the donation approved by the electors. So it's up to you kind of what direction you want to take with, with this.
Do you want to put this in a general government committee meeting? Or do you want to have further discussions and not vote on this?
I think it doesn't necessarily affect the zoning.
That's, you're right.
I'm concerned about the perception, sorry, I don't want to speak for you, but concerned about the perception in the documentation that's been in the council packet, where the applicant said that, you know, oh, it can be used for stormwater and recreation. And I believe there's some, maybe some notes from the planning commission along those same lines. I mean, the primary use has always been stormwater. It's that secondary use, and you just, you don't want to invalidate that donation later on down the line through this charter provision.
I think as it is written, intended use as stormwater and secondary open space. Open space in general is very neutral if it's just there and available for open space. But the minute we want to do any permanent structures, that's where we need to start having the discussion of taking it to an election.
Well, permanent structures, I think, is subjective. But I'm going to read you some justification for a zone change. That's part of the record. Item number two, the proposed zone change will provide land for communities such as stormwater management, open space, and recreational areas. And if you check the charter, recreational areas is specifically mentioned as an item that must have voter approval.
So then, I'm sorry. Mr. Gill?
Can we back for recreational use out and as open, and use it as open space to protect the issues with the charter? And my concern here is we have a gentleman that's trying to do a construction project, and I don't want another stone wall. Let's, let's get it done. If we need to back out for recreational use, then let's just eliminate it from that and leave it at open space because there is no issues with the charter on open space, I'm understanding. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's park, playground, golf course, swimming pool, recreational place or area. That's how the, those are the terms.
I think that we would be well within our rights if we backed out for recreational use and used it as open space, and then maybe identify a use for that open space at a later time.
And we can make those representations in the, in the donation agreement.
If that's the process, that makes sense, then I, then I'm comfortable with that. But I just need to publicly make for sure we understand that there's been reference to the fact that we're going to use that for recreational area.
Okay.
And if we do, we'll bring it up then because it's going to be open space. We've got a lot of stuff on our plate right now, and it's probably not going to be developed within a short period of time.
Mr. Ekstrom, do you have a comment?
That's fine. I was going to, you know, add to that, let's strike the recreational use, take it as open space. In time, we can send it to the voters if we want to develop it as a park. Right?
I like that a lot.
Can we strike stuff from the planning commission's stuffs? I don't think we can strike that.
This is our resolution.
Yeah, this is your ordinance.
We can, we can make it say anything we want.
And I think that they probably approved it not, not really keeping a close eye on the charter. I mean, it says, hey, they're going to give us a bunch of property, and yeah, we want to make it into this. Yes, yes, yes. So anyway, I don't think that anybody on planning commission would have the feeling hurt if we did something there.
I don't think it says anything in the actual.
It does say anything.
Does it?
It says it in the title.
Dina, would you care to comment?
But that's the title of the zone. We can't change the title of the zone designated in your code. That we can't change.
So I was just trying to, what Catherine just said. This, tonight before you, is a rezoning. So it's rezoning property using existing zone districts within the city. So one of the zone districts that this has been rezoned to is open space. So whatever the definition is currently of open space as a zone district, that's what you're approving this evening. As Catherine also mentioned, you can discuss more specifically the development agreement or the donation agreement at a later date. So this is simply the rezoning this evening.
Yeah, zoning the property, which I think its technical name is Open Space Parks and Recreation District, doesn't trigger your charter provision. It's how you actually use it, not your zoning. Because you can still just use it as open space and have that zoning designation and not trigger your charter provision. It's when you start to use park funds or make improvements to actually develop a park that you're probably going to trigger that charter provision. Does that make sense?
I'm comfortable with this public discussion.
Okay.
So then at this point, we are simply doing the zone change, and when they actually donate the land is when we have this discussion.
Yes.
Thank you.
We can clarify the language in the agreement.
I'm good.
Okay, so the, the motion stands as it was made. There's no modifications needed for it. This is just a zone change. Everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, we had a motion in a second. Correct? So call a roll, please.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, number eleven is the appointment of building code committee. Is appoint a building code committee. Could I have the staff report, please? Community development coordinator? Director? That's Dina.
I can provide you that, Mayor. The council narrowed the scope of this particular committee. Originally, we were talking about a broader scope, whether it be land use regulations, development regulations, to specifically the building code. So looking at the building code with the intent of exploring whether there's possible amendments, changes that would help facilitate particularly the redevelopment of the older structures in the city and also what lessons are learned from other communities with similar type of aged and architectural and historical facilities.
Any comments or questions from council?
Kathy's not here, right? Our building official is here.
All this would do is establish that their committee, committee.
Yes.
And you could put the requirements and stipulations within that. So all we're doing now is saying, yes, we're going to have a committee to do this. As I understand, that's what we're doing.
Specifically.
You're appointing members?
We're going to appoint members, you're right.
Focus on the current two thousand and six international building code which the city has adopted.
Okay, and, and we do this, then we will also appoint people this evening to that committee. Does everybody have that sheet? And names? Okay? So now we need a motion in a second. Mr. Gill?
I'm not sure where we are right this second, apologies.
What we're doing is.
I know we're, we're appointing it, okay? I didn't, go ahead, somebody else.
You wanting to talk about the names?
No, no, I'm not, no.
So we can't get to the naming until we get this passed.
You've already established the committee months ago. So now it's, you guys had tabled it from the June meeting because you wanted the community development director to be on board, and now it's time to appoint actual people.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing. And all the recommendations on the back sheet here.
Do we need to fill this list out like we've done?
Yeah. There's nothing to approve until we appoint, until we fill in all the blanks.
So then before we move, I would like to hear from Dina regarding the number of people that we solicit and fill in this. Because I.
Can you speak up a little?
Yeah, or I can speak into the microphone now that it works. I'm used to the old one.
Well, couldn't you hear you either then, Scott?
So there are lots of blanks, and committees can be quite cumbersome when we have too many voices. And so as we begin to consider this, I would like to know from Dina an ideal number because if this is what she brought forth, as far as all the vacant and empty spots, then so be it. But I've just, I've sat in enough committees now that when we have too many voices, nothing gets done.
This here was done by you guys before Dina.
Correct.
She may think this is too many, too.
That's, that's why, since, since she'll be facilitating, if I, if I read this correctly, she'll be facilitating this particular committee. I would like to hear from her regarding that.
So I'm not, I don't have what you have. So it's difficult for me to comment on. But yes, the process was begun before I started. So all of the applications came in. Apparently, the, the shortlist that you have in your packets has been previously done, or it may be all of the applicants that submitted because there weren't more applicants than were being asked for. So I have no idea how many are on your list.
Ten.
And then there's a number of blanks. Do you have the item number eleven, the actual blank sheet?
I have the blank sheet.
Yes, okay.
Oh, is it on the back?
In the meantime, while we're waiting, I'm inclined to say I agree. I think there's too many.
And, and speaking with Kathy, our building inspector, I can find, in working with her personally, I know there's a lot of technical information that this committee is going to be discussing. And I'm not sure a typical layman is going to have a fully understanding of what's going on here. I know that even the train, the building inspector in training has a, has a huge learning curve as far as the current building code and the difference between our outdated building code and current building codes. So I would just caution who we invite to this particular table because it can be quite technical and it's going to be quite cumbersome.
Okay, then we're moving toward putting names on that, right? Okay, let's do that.
Or taking two residents off or eliminating some of those. Is that what I'm hearing, Scott? You want to eliminate a resident or eliminate a business owner, property owner?
That would be my suggestion. I'm not sure.
Eliminate the number first and then?
If business owners are going to have a voice, then business owners need to maybe have a voice and have a representative from the business. And I would think the same would be true with residents. Instead of having too many people with different voices. Again, that's just a suggestion.
Right, and so another, so I did, on the flip side of the, the sheet, I have the table. And so a suggestion might be that maybe there are three residences, three business slash property owners, and three contractor trade persons on the committee.
That reduces it by one.
Well, there's overlap. Number five is in both categories. One, two, three, four. Looks like there's a few multiple chucks.
You're going to get rid of three business property owners and one resident.
So it would potentially reduce it by one, or if you're not accepting the application that came in after the due date, then there would be nine.
Scott, did I understand, I thought what you just said is one resident and one or two business property owners.
I would like to keep this committee smaller than.
Yeah, see, I'm inclined to agree with that.
I'm not sure we need to have two council people on there when we go. Because remember, right now, we're, we're inviting the public, and then we're going to put in electric officials on top of that. When I look at the, the whole list. Yep. Another question I have for you is, and you probably don't have the answer to this, is how many of these individuals are still interested? And what is the timeline on this? Are you going to start right away?
I think there's still, we need to define, I mean, as Tony mentioned, we want to very much focus simply on, on the building code and very much a discussion about primarily, say, some of the older buildings in the community. I think the, the challenge is that there's so much that can be covered. I think part of this, from, from staff's perspective, is we want to hear from some of the current property owners and contractors, some of the things that they're running into or experiencing as they're trying to rehab the buildings. And so that we can make a list of those. That doesn't mean that, um, staff may not come back with any proposed modifications to how we are utilizing the building code currently. There also may be a change in the building code in the next few years in terms of what the city uses. So I think the, the main focus of this is really understanding what some of the, the real and or perceived issues are that folks are running into out there now, so that that can help us. May not absolutely change the code, but may, we may be able to interpret the code or slightly differently in some cases. In some cases, maybe not. So I think, I haven't had a chance to really sit down with Kathy Ulls yet, our building inspector, to really formulate how we are going to focus this group.
And I think that would be key, again, given the feedback I've heard from her. So now I'm, I've actually, I'm hearing something different. This is, we're almost inviting this to just public comment, which, which is not a committee that's actually going to put forth a product. It's really just to hear what the problems are. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I just gathered from what, what Dina was saying.
Mr. Gill.
Dina, are you comfortable with the number of people that are listed on the front sheet and looking at it? Is that something you think could be a productive committee, or is it something that is overwhelming?
Good question. I think, I mean, in terms of the overall, kind of the blank, fill in the blank sheet, that is quite cumbersome and almost too much for a committee of, of this purpose and focus.
Then what, what are, what is your recommendation?
So if there are two council members, a planning commission member, staff, I would say we definitely want somebody from Fire District and perhaps some of the other, the Fremont Economic Development Chamber, et cetera. So with that, I would keep it to perhaps two residences, two business property owners and two tradespersons.
Are you okay with that, Scott?
I, I think the original intent with, with this committee was to actually look at the building code and start modifying it. That's not what I'm hearing now. I mean, this was the discussion that we had earlier in the year, was that we needed to look at the building code and start modifying it. Dina is actually proposing information and, and a gathering of, of different voices just to find out what the problems are before you start getting into the nuts and bolts. Is that true?
That would be the way that I would like to handle it, simply, again, because I think there may be a new building code coming down the pipeline. It may take two years to get that adopted with the city. So we don't want to spend too much time on a code that's potentially, you know, ten or more years old from a new version of a code that we're trying to move forward and adopt. So if we can start by hearing some of the concerns and issues that folks are running into currently, we can take that into account when this potentially new code is released and we start looking at that and adopting that for the city's use and any amendments that we might want to propose to that future code, rather than spending too much time on an existing code.
So not to put you on the spot, what would you like to do with this particular committee? Or whether it's an open house, you know, but you, you're the one that's going to be gathering the information here, you and Kathy, so.
Honestly, I think it makes sense to just wait with the committee. And the earliest that we would even begin right now would be probably middle of November after this group is, is convened, given just pure scheduling, vacation times, things like that, that are coming up with staff.
So there are people here tonight that were expecting to move forward with this, and they do have concerns and problems that they would like to address. What can we do in the meantime before we actually, again, I'm thinking the nuts and bolts committee versus starting to get that information in? Because we've already kicked it down the road once.
Right. We, you could still appoint a committee. We could start as long as those that are participating understand the, the focus.
That's all I have for now.
Mr. Gill.
One of the things that sparked this whole committee on this is there are buildings in town that you know are built in the 1800s. There are buildings in town that are built in 2017. The concerns are, and were quite heavy prior to you coming here, were that there should be some exceptions on our older buildings, a different, kind of a different set of rules, something that somebody can actually affordably go in and bring it up to a code that would be, you know, safe for the environment, safe for the people, without necessarily following all of the codes imposed on a 2017 building. And that was, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that was the intent of this committee, to try to, you know, find out where, where, where can we make exceptions on the older buildings, the 1940s and 50s and such, so that if somebody can actually come in and acquire these buildings and bring them up to code in a reasonable manner and still be safe for the public.
Right, and I think that, that was my understanding of what the focus was to be as well. And I, and I think that should be the focus still, because we definitely want to make sure that we're rehabbing a lot of these valuable buildings and infrastructure that we have. I think one other comment that I had made previously when this first came up, and it was right after I started, is somebody from Colorado Code Consulting needs to be part of the committee in the conversation because they're the experts on the commercial side of things from the city's standpoint right now. And so that's an additional cost, having them participate that perhaps wasn't budgeted to date.
Mr. Meisner.
So with the change in direction of trying to identify issues and problems, are you comfortable with all these people that wanted to help do that?
So I haven't had a chance to read through every single sort of resume or submission level, letter. Are you asking just overall number of people?
Generally, there are concerned residents that are either a resident, a business owner, a contractor that have expressed interest in trying to deal with this problem. My fundamental question is, is those 10 people, too many people, to start identifying the issues? We're not providing solutions. We're trying to identify problems.
I might make, if I can jump in here, make a suggestion. It sounds like we've got kind of two things going on here. One is to actually put together a committee to actually do the nuts and bolts review of the code and come up with recommendations. And the, and the other part of it is to identify just issues in general. And, and I'll just say, I mean, there's 20, 20 slots on this committee, and a 20-member committee is.
Huge.
Unworkable. It's absolutely unworkable. There, I mean, there's, I, I mean, I, I'd have a suggestion, but my, my suggestion for right now would be start by having more of a forum kind of a thing, uh, just a, a community input session and specifically involve the people whose resumes we have and who have expressed interest in this committee. And quite frankly, uh, in that forum, it will give you an opportunity to get to know the people who want to be on this committee, so you'll be able to evaluate whether or not you think they'll be a valuable member of the committee. Just, just putting people on a committee because they happen to be a resident or because they happen to own a business doesn't mean they belong on that committee. And I've often, I've said many, many times, um, for various times where you've had openings for the council or planning commission or board of adjustment or any of the boards that we have, just because we have applicants doesn't mean we have to pick from the applicants that who have applied. We have the right to reject them all and say, we're going to start over. And I think you have an excellent opportunity here to essentially interview the potential candidates for this committee as opposed to just, I mean, you don't know these people and you don't know their qualifications, and you're going to have to work with them. And I think getting to know them would be a, a, a much more prudent approach to staffing this committee.
I agree.
So, Dina, this is obviously, before you came on, this has been a big concern, and we would like to move forward with something at this point. Do you believe that we can start this forum here soon?
Just, so whether it's a formal committee or say just some informal listening sessions that we start with, we would not be able to start those until mid-November.
Okay, so we're looking at mid-November regardless, okay. In addition to your point, I, I know two contractors that weren't even aware of this committee, and they have concerns. And so as we start to move forward, we may, just if we do it as a forum, we may need to open that up to the other, you know, general contractors, at least make a public, you know, really try to advertise it, so they listen to those voices.
Rather, I think actually approach or recruit. Uh, don't wait for them to hear about it.
Yeah.
Mr. Gill.
In this, it, it seems like it makes sense. Um, we want to involve the people. I feel that, number one, have the knowledge, and number two, the people that have had to overcome what's in place now, so that we know the challenges and then, you know, what the solutions would be for that.
I'm comfortable moving forward with a forum format that's open to all of these committee members as well as listening to contractors to get their, their experienced input as far as identifying problems and setbacks that they've had and frustrations with working with the city and if we can at least can establish a list of things that we need to do to look forward. And possibly, we've mentioned, maybe taking some field trips to other cities who have overcome some of the problems that we're, we're currently having challenges with. And then that'll set us up for a good foundation to officially tackle the new codes in the future, in the near future.
From, from a timing standpoint, if this is changing to more of a forum, um, organization, I would think that staff, we could aim to have one sometime sort of between middle of November, middle of December, basically before year end, and perhaps have a second one, that listening session within the first two months of, of 2018, and then come back to council with the input that we've received from those two forums.
There's a gentleman back. Would you want to address us? Come on, I, I just need your name.
Hello, my name's Lester Lamone. Um, I'm an architect, and I also have a master's degree in community development. I just moved to your city, and this is exactly part of the stuff that I do. In my 25-year career so far, I've worked both as a chair of the planning commission in the city I came from for well over a decade, but I also worked on the code committee that moved us from 2006 to, to 2009, IBC, and then into the 2012 IBC. So I just wanted to, I, I was actually hoping for a less formal introduction, and this is my first council meeting, but I just wanted to say that I, I would be more than happy to volunteer in this effort. I have skills and abilities both technical and with community engagement, and I'm going to hand my card. So that, because I agree, it's a, it sounds like it's a, it's a two-piece puzzle, both technical and community engagement, whether that's the professionals in our community as well as landholders and real estate investors and contractors. And so I just wanted to step forward and say, I, I'm new here, but I'm not new to this situation. I'm not new to this profession, and if you can use me, please, I'd be willing to volunteer.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. No discussion?
I, Dina, I, I'm uncomfortable with waiting till November. I, I don't know why we have to do that. If we have a forum of people that are willing to come up, I think we need to get started quicker than that. And, and if it's only, if it even is run by either me or one of our council members, I think that's appropriate. I, I think maybe fact-finding can start well ahead of November. I just think that's too long. That's my opinion.
So I think the, the challenge is, one of our key staff members is finally taking a very deserved vacation in October, and will be out for two full weeks.
And, and I got it, and I think we have capable council people as well as myself that could possibly chair that committee, get it organized, and have discussion on what, what direction we'd like to go in, and we can give you that feedback. That's what I would like to see.
It might be good that she's on vacation during it.
No, I just, I, I, I appreciate that. I understand, and I understand that, but I think waiting now, we're talking next year sometime. I don't want to wait that long. This has been going on too long.
I mean, we're, we're basically at the middle of September now. I think by the time we coordinate dates with everybody, especially if we're trying to accommodate the folks that have, that are in this packet and get those notices out, we're probably looking at beginning of November.
I don't agree with that.
So we can, we can try to have it as soon as possible and be realistic.
I think we can do it by the middle of October. Most of these people are in town, and they can be notified very quickly.
Mayor, are you comfortable with this, this forum versus the actual committee start there?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm just curious, how many people in the audience there submitted a letter of interest? One, two, okay, well, it's hard to get.
The last conversation I had with most of them, they, most of them were still interested. It's in the package.
Well, I, I'm inclined to agree with the mayor that I think at least to get started, two months seems like an awfully long time to get together an informal session.
Yeah, and that's it, just an informal session. We can sit down and, and have that time to see what everybody's thinking. And we can give you and the staff the information from there. Then we can direct it from there, but it's their committee, the committee that we're trying to propose, or our committee. And I'd be willing to be there.
Do, do we already have a, let's see, an October plan for Vision? Do we have an agenda for the Vision Committee in October? Is that the type, uh, is that the type of forum where we invited? Well, it's scheduled for the 18th, but I was just making sure that we didn't have something already on the agenda or planned? Is, is that where we invite everyone in and
I say yes.
Record it so that we don't forget anything that was said and.
Let's do it. Let's get started. I mean,
If we have anything, I'll look. I will look. I thought we had something on Vision.
I think a lot of those people's concerns was trying to express those concerns to council, and that may be a format that, to start with, that allows that to happen, to start identifying.
So Dina, I think we're going to take it off of your plate for now and put it on ours. Well, you, you're, you can come and you can listen, but you're not going to have to facilitate it. Sound good?
Sure.
All right, and then that will kind of give us a direction for November. Let's try to get something more formal for November.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the Vision Committee? October? October, was it the 18th?
October 18th.
Okay.
And do we direct staff to contact local contractors to invite, and businesses to invite them to this open forum?
Yes, absolutely.
I can contact these people, that's these ones, but somebody's going to.
On here, but we're going to need to somehow get the word out to the public that this is what we'll be discussing.
Particularly in the, in the venues that are applicable.
Right.
To this committee.
Well, I believe that all our council people, I may have some of those people in your districts, might be a great time to talk to a constituent who happens to be a contractor. I mean, just throwing that out there.
I'm going to throw it back.
Brilliant idea.
That sounds good. We, we have a course of action.
What? Okay, Vision Committee, 18th. Thank you. Well, then, where do we go with here? Are we going to?
Thank you, Dina.
Ask those people that are, have put their names in to attend the Vision Committee meeting?
I will invite those.
Okay.
In the meantime, we're just going to basically indefinitely table appointing the members to this committee.
Yeah, we might as well just kill it, because they're going to be invited to be part of the other.
Sure.
Yeah, so the 10 people that were on there, we're going to invite you to come to that meeting, the Vision Committee meeting, for discussions. Okay? Okay, let's go on to number 12. It's a public hearing. It's an application for a special event liquor permit for the Elks Lodge 404 Macon Avenue. I hereby open the public hearing. Could we have a report from the city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Forrest Boriger, presiding the Elks Club, who's applied for a special event liquor permit for a two-day event to be held Friday and Saturday, September 17th and 18th. Notice of public hearing was given by posting the premises 10 days in advance. The Elks will be open for the public.
The Elks will be open for the public from 6:00 a.m. until midnight both days. The organization plans on opening their facility to the public for a craft show. Please note that they are having the alcohol permit from 6:00 a.m. until midnight both days, but they wouldn't be serving actually that early in the morning, correct, Forrest?
Today is September 18th, I might point out.
It's November, sorry.
November.
November.
Yeah, no, but that's what it says in there.
I'm using a template that I had, it's November, sorry. They'll be open, food will be available throughout this two-day event, they'll be identified that, they will be carefully checking IDs at the door, and those of legal drinking age will be given a risk ban to so indicate. Officers will be posted at the entry, exit doors to control the entry and exit of their patrons, and no alcohol. The club has held a number of similar events in the past with no resulting concerns. Many of the representatives from this organization have attended training offered by the city in the past. Upon review of the application, we find that the fee has been submitted with the application, the diagram meets the premises, meets the following requirement, and this corporation is good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you have of the applicant.
Ms. Ramley, this application isn't signed by the applicant nor the city clerk, is that an issue?
Actually, I needed to grab his signature, and I was going to grab it tonight because I was the one that filled out the application for them, so, no, and I do not sign them until after council approves.
And he didn't sign it?
He will sign it after tonight. What they did is they, they turned in the letter and Mr. Yuland was not available to sign it quite yet.
One of our things is we're all volunteers, of course, so the times we're available are very nebulous.
Oh, I understand, I just wondered what the legality of it was, if we've got an application before, it's not signed, a note that everything's true. I, sorry, but it just caught my eye.
So are there any questions of the applicant?
Is that an issue?
Thank you.
Mr. Weed, would you like to ask?
Sure. Thank you for coming down, George. Are you familiar with Colorado liquor code?
From a little training I had with Kathy there, what, a couple of months ago?
Couple of months ago, the, these folks go to a, they don't go to the full-fledged state liquor training, they just go to the nonprofit special event one.
Okay, is there a copy of the liquor code on file with your organization? Yes?
Yes.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
That's a number I didn't have in my head already. Probably about five or six at the event, because the event, you have to understand it's in our basement, so, well, the craft show's in the basement, so there's staff or bartenders and such that are in our upstairs bar, which will be operating at the same, will post some of these hours anyway. Our normal hours are from three to, well, on a weekend, from three to nine. So, that's when we'll have some people upstairs, which people from downstairs can come up to if they want to, since it's open to them under this permit. The downstairs ones will have... I've been thinking about six people who will be there at various times, because, you know, our permit covers our whole building, so as soon as the crafters start coming in, technically, we're now with the public, even though we're not selling anything, they're just setting up their booths. But we'll have people there for that and people there throughout the time that we are, they are selling and until we close for the evening.
Now, I'm just going to comment, this is not the first time that the Elks has come to city council to ask for a special event liquor permit. So there are quite a few people that I'm aware of at the Elks Lodge that are familiar with the Colorado liquor code and have gone through the training, and I would encourage you to take advantage of those people that are already there. But, that being said, the volunteers that you're going to be using, how will they be trained on the Colorado liquor code?
Our, well, first, our bartenders are bartenders, so they already have that. The people who are monitoring, we are simply monitoring that nobody, well, there'll be ID checking, of course, as Kathy said, but the other folks are just monitoring that no one leaves the premises. We have many, many doors, many ways out, and we have to have them open because of fire code exit requirements. So, it could be easy for anybody to just walk out in the street. And that's, and that's our main intention, is to keep those folks inside.
Now, I'll tell you, an issue and a concern that this council has had on a number of these applications in the past is the potential for over-service of patrons, and...
That's probably true in every establishment.
Right, and so, part of the liquor code training deals with recognizing and managing
Yes.
patrons who perhaps have had too much, and so, I'll just point out that that's going to be something you'll need to be aware of.
It's worth noting, in this particular event, liquor service is not our primary thing, it's hardly even secondary. The primary thing is the craft show.
Sure.
You know, if somebody happens to come up to our upstairs bar, we just have to have, even if we serve no liquor at all, well, we're going to be open for our members, so because of that, that's the only reason we're doing this. If we could, my initial plan was to shut it down for the public, but apparently we can't do that, and still be open to our members, too.
Yeah.
I have a comment. They're very unusual because they have a club license, which lets them serve alcohol to members only. When they open that building up to the public, whether or not they're really serving the alcohol to the public, when they're having this craft fair, because they're going, they're open to the public, even if they don't serve any alcohol to the public, requires them to have that special event. So, their main intention is not to serve alcohol to, to the craft fair people, but they have to have that special permit, liquor license, just to be open for their members.
Yep.
Should they sell one glass of beer to somebody, whether they sell it or not, anytime they open to the public, they have to have that.
So you're having to go through the whole process that people whose intent is to have an event that sells beer and wine and spirits?
Yeah, if you were having this event in the park, we wouldn't be talking to you right now.
Right. Okay, moving on. Are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado liquor code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, as well as future licensing?
Yes.
All right. Would you like to take a moment or two and tell us a little about the event?
Well, let's see. I don't know what to tell you, a craft show is a craft show, it's probably primarily focused on Christmas stuff, but who knows? The person organizing it, one of our members, I asked her if it's a Christmas show, she says no, but then she's decorating for Christmas. So, so we're, so we'll be, we'll open the doors early in the morning on Friday morning for the people to come in and set up, you know, move all their stuff in. We'll have, it will be open only a few hours, like five to seven, or five to, yeah, about four, I think four to seven on Friday, the craft show, but the building's still open. And then, it'll be open again in the morning on Saturday till about 5:00, for them, they'll craft people will take their stuff out at that time. It's in our basement, like I said, so there'll be a little signage on the sidewalk telling people how to get in, because it won't be real obvious. Going to have some signs on top, on the side of the building, on the Forest Street side that are being made right now, to let people know it's there. It's just a craft show.
Yep, well, good luck with that, hopefully there's a lot of Christmas things there, it's a really good time for that, there's also Thanksgiving the next week.
For the vendor's sake, I hope so, anyway.
So.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get a cut of that, they pay us the fee to be there, and like any other craft show, they make what they make.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Any more from city council? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, could I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll, members of council, I'll make the motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for the Elks Lodge on November 17th and 18th.
Sheen Mark, a second, any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
George.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Can you have George come in and sign that? George is the one that's on there, I think.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ordinance, number 13, it's ordinance number 33, a series of 2017, this is first reading, it's an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money. I need three to introduce that ordinance. Mr. Smith, Mr. Weed, Mr. Gill, thank you. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 33, series of 2017, an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2017 budget year.
Could I have a report from the city administrator, please?
Yes, mayor and council, as you know, during the course of a year, there are necessary adjustments to the budget. In this case, as it relates to the general fund, we have a couple positive developments that we want to reinvest. One is the revenue stream from Royal Gorge Bridge in excess of what we anticipated by about approximately $200,000, they're having a very good year. The stormwater fund, after having that reviewed by our recent consultants, needs to transfer to the general fund approximately $256,000 for the work that people like Engineering Department, Streets Department provides them. We've been fundamentally under paying the general fund for the work that's done on behalf of the Stormwater Fund. We'll get into more details about that when we review the rates for both the water and stormwater utilities, but it's pertinent. Also, use tax is in excess of what we anticipated by approximately $149,000, and cable TV funds for some of the improvements within this particular facility. So that's the positive news, roughly $633,000 in additional revenue or resources. Predominant uses would be for the PTO, approximately $350,000 for the general fund, and the Pump Hill stabilization project that was conducted this year represents the lion's share of how we would want that, those funds to be reallocated. As you know, the PTO was an expensive investment, but it will lead to an approximate quarter of a million dollar annual savings to the city, so a good long-term return. As it relates to the Park Improvement Fund, just roughly $40,000, again, from their fund balance to pay for the PTO expenses. The Water Fund, $600,000, that is excess retained earnings that is being invested in the 2A, you know, water main improvements this year. So we actually, as you well know, we're able to accelerate those improvements based upon the contract this year, so we think that's a good thing, because time is money, if we can get things done now, it's less expensive than doing them tomorrow or the next few years. And finally, under the Stormwater Fund, that reflects $375,000, which will be used for Field Avenue improvements, they've already been accomplished, the Stormwater improvements, sidewalks will be next, 2A improvements related to Stormwater, and then the biggest chunk is the operating transfer to the general fund. So that kind of in a nutshell explains the bulk of these proposed changes to the budget.
Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Meisner?
So, the Pump Hill project was, how much over budget was that?
Over budget, it wasn't really budget this year, it was $122,500. Think there was a start of it the prior year, but the bulk of the work was done in 2017.
And that was not a budgeted project?
Carryover. Again, the biggest expense was the PTO, by far. 60% of this expenditure increase related directly to PTO.
Okay. Any more questions? Comments? Are you finished, Mr. Meisner?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion in a second? Mr. Weed?
All right, thank you, mayor, members of council. I will make the motion to approve ordinance number 33, series of 2017, on first reading.
In a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Gill, second. Any discussion on that motion? None, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Mr. Weed?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a moment to take this opportunity once again to express my appreciation, and I'm sure everybody on council's appreciation, to Harry Patel for taking good care of our money and managing our budget, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Harry.
Do you appreciate your expertise, thank you.
And now, the moment we've all been waiting for.
The man of the hour.
The man of the hour, the chief of police.
I just got a call, I gotta, I'll be right.
You've been waiting. I know, you've probably parked in a parking zone.
No cell phones in the council chamber, Mr.?
Number 14, ordinance number 34, series 2017, this is the first reading, it's an ordinance prohibiting the use of cell phones and texting while driving. I need three to introduce. That's three council people to introduce. Mr. Ekstrom, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Gill. Thank you. Could I have, could you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 34, series of 2017, an ordinance amending chapter 10.04 of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition thereto of a new section, 10.04.065, governing misuse of a wireless telephone while driving, and a new section, 10.04.720, governing driving under restraint, and amending section 10.04.060C penalties.
Could we have a staff report from the chief of police, Mr. Harvey?
Mayor, members of the council, I submitted a memo along with your packet to outline a couple of justifications, really, in my mind, the reason for the ordinance, there's three questions really to answer, whether or not we need it here. The first is, is this actually a problem texting and driving? And I think nationally, we can show that, not only in our community, but in others as well, that texting and driving poses a significant danger to the motoring public. The National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration did several bits of research that have been peer-reviewed and showed that there is a significant impairment for folks who are using cell phones, texting and driving, and taking their eyes off the roadway. As a matter of fact, in one of the studies that was peer-reviewed by the NHTSA, it showed that drivers have, in instances, taken their eyes off the road for 4.6 seconds, which at driving at 55 miles per hour is roughly about a football field's distance. So, I think there's, it's kind of a no-brainer that there is a need for those when we have folks that are being distracted that long of a period of time. The second question is really, is this an actual issue here in the city of Canyon City? And unfortunately, I don't have any data to back that up. The only thing I can show, which I mentioned in the memo, is that a closely associated underlying cause of traffic crashes, both fatal and serious bodily injury, is following too closely. And really, what that relates to is not a specific study that can say that distracted driving, clearly, if they're distracted for 4.6 seconds, then they're not paying attention to what's happening in front of them. Following too closely is relative when you're taking your eyes off the road for that length of time. So is there a connection there? I believe there is. My personal observations driving around the city, I have seen folks that are driving and using cell phones. And then the third question really is, why do we need it as an ordinance as opposed to just following the Colorado revised standard, I'm sorry, statute? And I guess really, it gets to the crux of, why do we have municipal ordinances that deal with a model traffic code anyway? The state is trying to regulate traffic across the state to be more uniform, there's been several recent case law that say that, you know, used to council, especially in a home municipality, had a lot of leeway to be able to say, well, we're going to change this ordinance this way or that way. Several case laws shared with me by council that, as recently as 2016, say that there's a matter of statewide concern as it relates to traffic regulation, so we don't have that, really, that authority to be able to change it, either define, which I'm saying things you already know, but I guess what really I'm getting to here is... Either define, which I'm saying things you already know, but I guess what really I'm getting to here is, in the code and in the state statute, um, for a person over the age of eighteen who is texting and driving, that's the first kind of element that we would have to prove. The second is that the person is driving while using that in a careless or imprudent manner, and it relates to our careless driving, um, model traffic code regulation there in the ordinance set before you, and that's really, I guess, the reason why we should have a local ordinance addressing this. If it is a state statute, uh, that matter would go before, if we wrote that ticket, um, it would go before a county court. If we write it into municipal court, then that, um, how that gets, uh, relating court and how the judge just says, okay, this, I agree, this is careless and imprudent, then resides with our municipal court judge, and so really, it's local government. Allowing us to define local matters and be, it does give us some laterability to be able to say, okay, this is, this is, uh, clearly careless and imprudent, as it's, uh, the municipal court judge, um, finds those facts, as opposed to just going to a county court. So, you know, it goes back to the basic justification of why we have a municipal court anyway, is for us to be able to say locally, this is how we interpret this here in Canyon City. Clearly, we can't change the ordinance. Clearly, uh, other guiding principles that say how we have to interpret that, or fine amounts, or point amounts, all those things are set. But I think the, uh, the major selling point for us having a local ordinance, because it is an issue here, is for us to be able to define terms, relative terms like that, careless and imprudent, or other, uh, legal definitions of things in the ordinance.
Thank you, Chief Harvey. Appreciate it. Any discussion from council? Any questions of the chief? Mr. Gill?
On the ordinance that we have written, um, in the, in the state statute, does it have to be in a careless situation? Or is that something that's written into our ordinance?
No, our, uh, and, correct me if I'm wrong, council, but it mirrors the state law, so that is actually in the state law as well.
You know, my concern on it is a three hundred dollar fine. That's my concern.
You know, if you look at our, uh, municipal traffic code as it currently stands, careless driving, just careless driving, as has already been approved, is a fine amount from a hundred and fifty dollars up to three hundred dollars. So, I, you know, obviously, the police department's gonna have to go through, um, some training as well. To be able to enforce this, we're gonna have to up our game a little bit, just to be honest. Uh, because not only are they also driving while texting, but is it imprudent, or are they driving in a careless manner? So...
And a careless manner would be very important to me. I mean, you know, rather than, you know, it's like, it's a, it's a thing of the world, do we like it? No, we don't. Is it a dangerous act? Yes, it is. But, I mean, it's not, don't wanna open a big can of worms where everybody's, you know, who picks up their phone's gonna get a three hundred dollar fine.
Right, and that, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying there is that, um, if you see somebody that's driving erratically, now we then have to find out were they actually texting and driving? Did we see them doing it, or is it just gonna be a careless, uh, careless driving fine? So, there's a, an added element for us to enforce, to determine, were they actually texting and driving, or were they just driving carelessly? And it, it's not always easy to see that, so, you know, was the person looking down while they were driving? Were they fumbling with something? Those are things that we'll have to, from a police department, be able to articulate prior to writing this fine, so it's not gonna be as simple as, okay, we saw you driving, uh, you, you crossed over a lane, and, uh, oh, were you using your cellphone? Because we have to, by the ordinance, we have to see them, uh, or see them in some capacity where we know that they were texting and driving.
Yeah, I've heard some things where, um, an officer would ask for the phone, and I don't think that's right. I mean, if he was texting or whatever, I mean, to verify that he was texting or wasn't texting, and I just think that's pretty much an invasion. And I don't know that our officers would have the, uh, the right to do that, to use it to prove that they were texting and driving.
Well, from a law enforcement standpoint, as you know, we can ask consent to search anything, and if somebody consents to search, then they would allow us to look at that. If somebody tells us no, that's where I'm talking about, it's gonna be a little bit more difficult for us to say, was the person texting and driving?
Right, and sometimes a request from an officer is not necessarily a request in the, in the citizen's eye. You know what I mean? It's a, it's a statement, you know? Would you like to show me your phone? And they're, they don't know that they have the right to say no.
Well, and, you know, the Colorado revised statute is pretty clear on that. If we ask permission or consent to search something, we also have to tell them that they have the right to refuse.
Okay.
So that's under Colorado.
As long as that's part of the, the rhetoric, or the, you know, the report, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I mirror, uh, Councilman Gill's concern about the fines, uh, because it's fairly clear that there, there's no discretion, and these are minimum mandatory fines. And, um, I guess, m- my concern, I know it's a no-point violation, but, um, si- since you already have to establish and prove careless driving, to me, this is just piling on. It's just another char- you, the, it's careless driving, and whether it's because they dropped their sandwich on the floor and they're going for it, or they're adjusting the radio, or they're putting makeup on, or they're reading a book, it's all careless driving. And that, it's, you know, it, what, so, is it worth another three hundred dollars because it happened to be careless driving because you were doing something with your phone? I don't buy it.
Your sandwich?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just, I think it's unfair. I think it's piling on, and, you know, if you, I think the charge is, uh, I mean, and under state statute, I guess you could still go and, and charge with, uh, the cellphone violation, but, uh, again, that's, you know, it's one of those cases where, and I mean, I read in the police reports, you know, there's some guy got arrested, and he had like twelve charges, uh, here in the last day, and it, it's, I don't think it's necessary.
My question is, whether this pass, whether we adopt this or not, you can still pull someone over for using their cellphone while driving carelessly, right?
That's correct.
And issue them a ticket.
Under our state statute, that's correct.
So, they already can do it regardless. It's just a matter of, if this can be, if we're gonna keep it local in our municipal court, or if it's gonna go to the county.
Well, if, if, if you just write a careless driving ticket, which is what the, the offense is, it's careless driving, and then what, what was the cause of it? Who cares what the cause was? It was careless driving. It's, uh, and if you happen to be using your cellphone, you get a careless driving ticket, you know what you were doing, and hopefully you learn from that, and you won't do it again. But, uh,
Given that argument.
The careless driving can be written into municipal court. If you wanna keep it local, write it in municipal court.
That's what this ordinance is for.
I would like to, uh, this, I think it's important that we start putting some importance on texting and using your cell phones. Um, the fact that the state has issued this pretty, I think it's pretty liberal the way that they've gone about this, because in other states, if you're, if you touch your phone and a cop sees you touching the phone, you, they can pull you over just for that, which is why we have Bluetooth and, and a lot of these amenities on new vehicles. Um, so I would say that, given a three hundred dollar fine on top of a careless, I would actually disagree with you. I think that sends a very clear message, stay off your phone in the future, versus dropping a sandwich. I would like to give our local officers the direction that being on the phone or texting, especially to, uh, underage drivers, is something that we find is important, because it's, it's actually getting out of control, in my opinion.
And it's not just underage. Three incidents that I've seen just since last Friday has been old broads.
Well, yeah, and, and that's, but again, my, with the, with the underage, I'm, I'm talking about new drivers. They're distracted enough. There's a lot going on, so.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion and a second from council. Would we like a motion, Mr. Meisner?
No, I got another question.
Okay, then you got another question. Go ahead.
Is there a difference in, in, uh, between the eighteen and, under and over in terms of the, the carelessness?
Um, yes, if they're under eighteen.
It's strictly usage?
Correct.
No carelessness parameter involved with that. Is that correct?
Yeah, unless, unless the person is, uh, in a bona fide emergency, that would be the only exception.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schumacher?
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance thirty-four, series of twenty seventeen, on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Now, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
No.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
No.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to fifteen. It's approved designs for artwork and designate, and designate locations. Could we have a report from the city administrator, please?
First, I want to recognize Lisa from the audience, and it'd be Rob Smith, but we have a group of, of two.
Uh, Lisa's in the audience chaired this committee. Uh, the council had the vision to adopt, uh, an appropriation several months ago, fifteen thousand dollars to acquire these dinosaur and big sheep sculptures with the intent of allowing the community to paint them and represent the spirit of, of this community. In most communities where this has been done, with different types of animals, whether it's pigs, or cows, or fish, it's almost universally done by professional artists. In our case, and with council's consent, you've reached out to ensure that this is really, um, an expression of the community, whether it's from children in elementary school, to offenders in our prison, to not-for-profits, and that's exactly what we've achieved here. We want to recognize Pat Frieda, Judy Gillette, Christie Gotham, Corey Hendershot, Brad Kepphart, Rob Smith, and Lisa for going through fifty-five applications, ranking them, and what you have here is ten plus one, because we were able to, within the budget, order one more of the sculptures, which was, um, uh, s- um, trying to remember which one it was.
Stegosaurus.
Stegosaurus, how could I forget? My favorite one, because the Boys and Girls Club had a design for that, but they had run out of stegosaurus, as they had already been spoken for, and talking to them, their design is specifically appropriate for a stegosaurus. It really wouldn't transfer to a T-Rex, uh, from an artistic's perspective. So, we asked them if we did order another stegosaurus, would they like to participate, even though it would take about two weeks to get that sculpture, and they absolutely do. So, the runner-up for the T-Rex category was an offender at the territorial prison here, so that party will be able to paint the T-Rex. So, it's a good sprinkling of, we have school kids, we have not-for-profit entities, we have people from the correctional environment, so it truly is a strong cross-section of the community that's participated, and will be able to showcase their work in the community over the next several months.
Wow, thank you. That's, uh, there's a lot of humor here, but, um, losing a stegosaurus is really tough.
I know. Lot of fins to lose.
You could, yeah. How's your stegosaurus today?
Yeah.
All right, well, I gotta stop there. What? Where are we at? All right. We need to have comments and questions from council.
I would like to hear from the committee. I walked in, uh, in their meeting, it was very lively, and they, I, you guys spent a really long time on this project, and I just wanna express our gratitude and like to hear from you all. Not only that, but they had to spend a long time here tonight, waiting for their moment of glory.
Yes.
Yeah, please, I would, I would like them to all be acknowledged.
Yeah, it took us all day, almost. Uh, we started about, uh, well, ten-thirty, and it lasted about, uh, three o'clock. Uh, we reviewed all of them. We, we divided it up into categories based on, um, the type of, uh, organization or school, um, and then voted on those, um, and then got a sampling, and then we, uh, decided to go through and figure out which, uh, design would fit on what dinosaurs, um, and then we had some leftover, um, obviously. Uh, that's why we decided to go with, um, the organization, uh, the Boys and Girls Club with the stegosaurus. That design really didn't translate to a T-Rex, uh, based on the, what they designed. But, yeah, it was fun. It was a good experience. Um, I was, I was very happy to see, I think the rest of the committee was very happy to see how many applications that we got from different organizations, and schools especially. I think it was, um, a requirement for one of her classes, um, Laura's class, uh, an advanced, um, art class at the high school, that she required all of her students to submit an application. And so we had to review all of those as well, which was really neat to see, and I think, uh, we awarded two of their designs.
Great. Thank you. So...
I have one more question from the committee. Um, I don't know if you'd be interested, but once a month, the city, on Carolyn, we have our radio talk show for the city that represent, um, things that are going on, and wondered if maybe someone, folks from the committee would like to come and join us on the radio. It would be October fourth at eight-thirty AM.
Sure. Yes, we could definitely do that.
So far, I'm the only dinosaur that's, goes there in the morning.
I've been there.
Well, Mr. Meisner?
I, I just have a question. Is, this is gonna translate to something on a dinosaur?
Yes, that's going to translate, it's going to wrap around the front of a, um, I believe it's a brachiosaurus. Is that what it says?
Yes.
It got a hole punched in it.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's one of the high school.
Um, I just, I, cause, how much did these things cost a piece? They're like a thousand?
They average about twelve to thirteen hundred a piece.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just happened to be in the building upstairs when the committee was assembling, and, uh, I, uh, one of my comments was, pick some runners, runners up. Uh, fifty-five is a lot to choose from. There's probably gonna be a lot, and there's gonna be good choices that you're not gonna be able to use. So, um, I have a suggestion for this council, or for people who are gonna be on this council next year, or even we do it this year if we feel motivated, uh, is continue this project. We've got, I think there's seven runners up that they chose in here. Uh, we've managed to scrape up money for a variety of projects over the years that weren't budgeted. Harry loves to hear this. And, uh, I, I think this is gonna be amazing. I really do. And I, I mean, whether it's done now or next year, I would strongly encourage council to, uh, budget or find the money for additional, uh, forms to carry this project on.
We've done that for the two thousand eighteen budget.
Yes.
So, we, we, we definitely believe there'll be even a greater outpouring of interest, and we respect these runners up. I mean, they could have just as easily been the sel- select few that were chosen. We also recommend that, out of fairness and out of competition, that they have to reapply. Clearly, they've got really good work, and it should rise to the top, but it'd be unfair just to kind of slot them in as winners without subjecting them to more competition, but we think we'll probably get twice as many applications the next go-around after January. But we agree with you completely.
Maybe you wanna get twice as many dinosaurs.
More stegosaurus is, yeah, kind of rolls off your tongue, that stegosaurus. I'm liking it, yeah.
If we could paint the mayor, that would save us twelve hundred.
Okay, I need a motion then. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schumacher?
I make a motion that we approve the designs for the artwork for the dinosaurs and big horn sheep, and designated locations for their placements, and thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Rob.
I'll second that.
Mr. Weed? Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, last on the agenda is number sixteen. We're going to move into executive session to discuss, uh, requests or proposals regarding the Royal Gorge Bridge, and I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this, because my company has a portion there around that might be of interest. So, uh, I'm going to leave, and I'll ask the mayor pro tem to adjourn the meeting when you're done. I will not be attending the executive session. So, Dennis will adjourn.
Okay. Can do.
We need a motion and, and a second to move into executive session.
Who's got it?
Who's got it?
Who has the motion? Mr. Meisner?
I can, I can try this. Let me see if I got this right. Mayor and council, mayor pro tem, who's running this, you or him?
Right now, it's me.
All right, mayor and council. Um, I move that city council hold an exes- executive session to hold a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, period.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Weed, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.